Meeting to Order. Please join me in the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite Dan to join us, open us with some words of inspiration. Daniel is the pastor at the First United Methodist Church. Thank you.
Hello, friends. Thank you for having me tonight. It's good to be here with you all. As we begin our time together, let's pause for a moment of centering prayer. Gracious God, it has been a Tuesday. So we gather at the end of a day. There has been much that we've done, and there is much left to do, but we pause for a moment to say thank you. We thank you for this community that we get to be a part of and all that you've given to us. We thank you for our city leaders and commissioners who serve us. And we thank you for the forward progress that we are making together. Tonight, we gather in this place because we care and because we want to be a part of making Pittsburgh better. And so we ask that a spirit of wisdom and unity would be ours tonight. May we have ears to hear one another and to open our hearts to explore the possibilities that exist for all of us. And may we be united in our common purpose, that through our deliberations and through the works of our hands, our city would continue to grow, to be stronger, and more just, and more compassionate for all of your people. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. I will open public input. If you would have something to share, please come forward, state your name and address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes or less.
Good evening. Kristi Bittner, 1401 Bittner Court. In respect to the July 22, 2025 Commission meeting, a special presentation of the five-year financial forecast and presentation of the city manager's submitted budget was given by Darren Hall. He began remarks by stating he took the commissioners' original budget book because there were changes being made in printing new budget books for them to receive that evening. He referenced the May 5 work session and how the city had received better information since that time. It was mentioned that for three or four years, the city has been going for a one-time 15% sewer charge in 2026. And after looking at the debt schedule, it was mentioned in the presentation that the city decided not to do a large 15% increase and just do a 3% for 2026. Darren and Jay noted to the commissioners the reason for making the changes to the budget is to, quote, "reflect as much reality as possible and reflect that in the budget as it's submitted to you," unquote. The other reason stated is they wanted to post the most accurate submitted budget for commissioners and for people to review, which would allow six weeks before the September 9 public hearing. So as we move forward to the September 9 meeting of the submitted budget, Margie, the financial consultant, stated the budget book did have errors that have all since been corrected. Margie also stated the summary pages that were published and needed to be replaced are available now. I would hope that commissioners and the public would always appreciate the entire budget book to be able to see how the numbers were determined to be on the state certificate. The unencumbered balance at the beginning of 2026 is listed at $23,968. What happens to unencumbered revenue from property taxes? Where does it go, and who decides how it's spent? The last thing I would like to share is that on September 15, about a week after the commission meeting, I made a request to the city clerk for the updated 2026 budget documents regarding changes in the last commission meeting. After reviewing the video of the meeting on the 9th, it seemed to be a valid request. The vote to approve the state certificate was approved by the commission and ready to send to the county clerk. The response I received is that my request would be delayed until or on before October 31. The documents had not been finalized. Why is this, considering the commissions and public were told those documents are already finalized and accurate? How could you request the commissioners to approve a document that may or may not be accurate? It's transparency and accountability to the citizens to see the numbers and how they are created that should be of the utmost importance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kristi. Anyone else?
Greetings.
Greetings.
My name is Eric Muade, and my address is 1410 Bittner Terrace. Now, over the last 13 years or so, I have been responsible for taking care of scheduling daily informal practice for adults, as far as soccer is concerned. When I say adults, I'm talking about from middle school, high school, all the way on up to working class. Now, for context, I and many others in the city, like area coaches, have been talking to the city for many, many years. In fact, I have an email that we were talking with the city with Jay and Darren, going back to 2016, about the need for public soccer fields. Now, over the last couple weeks, going back a couple months, you've seen speakers come and talk. Most of them are area coaches, asking for the need for the public to be having a place where we can go play. In other words, a need for public soccer fields. Now, even though they've addressed the need for public soccer fields, there's a major pain point that we all experience. And if you look today at your phones, you see the daylight is going to be at about 7:13. And you can imagine, most of the people get off work at 4, 5, or 6. So there's really no time to go home and change and go out and play. Now, this affects all age groups because the kids are relying on coaches who have jobs. So they also have to wait until later on in the evening to go play. So having no lights has been a major issue. And so the other thing is, it might seem that this is an issue between November and March of every year when there's daylight savings time, but it's actually across the year, throughout the year. Because even when we go play in Joplin or in Carthage, they've been using lights throughout the summer months because the last games either begin at 9:00 in the summer, and lately, they've been beginning at 7. So, and the soccer game is two hours long, including halftime. So it does take a while. By the time we get out there, it's always dark. So there's always been an issue for light. So if we're going to serve the community adequately when it comes to solving this issue of public soccer fields, I believe it's reasonable for us to ask for lights. Because if you look at baseball, basketball, tennis, or pickleball, they all have lights. So we believe it's a reasonable request. And the other thing is, if we are going to have the ability of hosting tournaments, then also that is also, and have traffic and revenue come back in the community, we do need to have access to lights. Thank you for your time and your considerations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, I'll close public comments. Move on to Kristi.
This is about Silverback Landing remarks. You all have questions that I'd like to ask about tonight's agenda item. We're just wondering, does Silverback Landing LLC have a 501(c)(3) license? And please explain the process for how a for-profit development changes to a nonprofit development, and what happens when lots are sold? And is Silverback Landing LLC a broker for the lots, or a builder and seller of the houses, and who receives the money? Will Silverback Landing LLC be required to comply with all the documents approved and signed on September 25, 2018? What plans have been developed for the completion of the eligible cost list? Who's receiving any or all eligible costs in the RHID, and what does they amount? Is Silverback Landing LLC reducing the cost of the lots? Are the style of houses to be used during Phase 1 the same, or will there be other options? Will builders be required to construct as originally planned, and will they be required to be licensed? What will happen to the remaining property not in Phase 1? If sold, will the proceeds from the property be considered profit? Will the board of directors be prohibitive from purchase of the land? Will it be another RHID? Could other types of homes be allowed? What about the landscape easement that is to be constructed? The plat shows a 20-foot easement in the final plat in the Register of Deeds as stated by both the developer and city staff when asked during the plat approval process. Who is the responsible party to the homeowners already in the development? What is happening to the five homes built by P&amp;L after the agreement is executed? Have these homes been deleted from the agreement? In a few days, this development will have been approved eight years ago. A recommendation for the city is that it post all planning and zoning meetings on the city website to maintain consistent communication in this process. It is the hope of many that the rules and regulations that our city ordinances from this point on be followed throughout the timeframe of the existence of this agreement. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further comments, I'll close public input. On the consent agenda, we're pulling Item B off to consider separately. So consent agenda will be A and C.
Move to approve A and C.
Second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl. Roll call vote. Brooks?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
McNae?
Yes.
Winso?
Yes.
Siggly?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, approval of ordinance number G1375 amending Section 7-72 of the Pittsburgh City Code to extend the residency requirement for certain city department heads from 8 miles to 10 miles and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance on behalf of the city. Cheryl?
I was just wanting you to explain the reason behind the, is it amended to go from 8 to 10?
Yeah.
And that that is to account for, thankfully, the new director of finance?
You're correct.
Great. Glad to have you. I just wanted that known. Yes.
Could you explain why you...
Because you're not in city limits of Pittsburgh. So I know we had people talk about the sales tax and what that burden is on them. And so, you know, that's my concern, that we ought to have people helping with what everyone else in the city pays for.
Yeah, but most companies will have to go outside their region to get, most cities will have to go out there to get experienced people. And that's just a reality today.
And we're already doing 8 miles. So, I mean, we're just moving it from 8 to 10.
So we don't, it's all right if you live in Pittsburgh, you pay for things that if you don't live in city limits, you don't have to pay. I understand your comments, Stu.
Well, it's been all right. I mean, for the eight years.
I realize that. But it's still not right in my eyes.
Are you suggesting all employees live in town?
Well, you know, they used to when I was on the department. Then they went to 8 miles.
Every single employee has always, and during your tenure, you had to live within city limits? Every single employee? This is just department heads?
Right.
This isn't everybody?
Right. So.
Just clarifying.
So as long as you all are all right with...
I think we'll, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
If you're all right with this and don't have to help pay for things in the city, that's how it's going to be.
I also think we have a housing issue. And so even recruiting somebody from another community, they may have difficulty finding a house within...
Well, we're getting ready to sell a housing development to someone else that's going to build some houses.
You can't wait for a finance director until a house is built. We need it now.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
So, tell them to.
Second.
Moved by Doc, seconded by Stu. I'm going to do a roll call vote.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
McNae?
Yes.
Winso?
No.
Siggly?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on. Special presentation, 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the ACFR. Stacy Hammond from BT &amp; Co., PA, the city's auditing firm, will present to review the city's 2024 audit and ACFR. Hello, Stacy. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stacy Hammond with BT &amp; Co., and I'm the partner on the city's financial statement audit. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present the results of the annual audit. I think all of you have received two documents from us. One of them is a copy of the audited financial statements, and the other is a report that's addressed to the members of the city commission. That report that's addressed to the city commission really puts into writing everything that our audit standards require us to present about the results of the audit, and it also forms the basis of my presentation this evening, if you'd like to open it up and follow along. The first thing that I need to visit with you about is our responsibilities in performing the city's audit. We did perform the city's audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States, the provisions of the Single Audit Act, Uniform Guidance, the Office of Management and Budget Compliance Supplement, and the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. All of those standards together do require us to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the city's financial statements are free from material misstatement. As far as the procedures that we performed, we did examine on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. We also reviewed the...
Anyone else?
Greetings.
Greetings.
My name is Eric Muadeh, and my address is 1410 Bitner Terrace. Now, over the last thirteen years or so, I have been responsible for taking care of scheduling daily informal practice for adults as far as soccer is concerned. When I say adults, I'm talking about from middle school, high school, all the way on up to working class. Now, for context, we, I and many others in the city, like coach, area coaches, been talking to the city for many, many years. In fact, I have an email that we were talking with the city with Jay and Darren going back to 2016 about the need for public soccer fields. Now, over the last couple of weeks, going back a couple of months, you've seen speakers come and talk, most of them are area coaches, asking for the need for the public to be having a place where we can go play. In other words, a need for public soccer fields. Now, even though they've addressed the need for public soccer fields, there's a major pain point that we all experience. And if you look today at your phones, you see the daylight is gonna be at about 7:13. And you can imagine, most of the people get off work at four, five, or six. So there's really no time to go home and change and go out and play. Now, this affects all age groups because the kids are relying on coaches who have jobs. So they also have to wait until later on in the evening to go play. So having no lights has been a major issue. And so the other thing is, it might seem that this is an issue between November and March of every year when there's daylight savings time, but it's actually across the year, throughout the year. Because even when we go play in Joplin and in Carthage, they've been using lights throughout the summer months because the last games either begin at nine o'clock in the summer, and lately they've been beginning at seven. So, and soccer game is two hours long, including halftime. So it does take a while. By the time we get out there, it's always dark. So there's always been an issue for light. So if we're gonna serve the community adequately when it comes to solving this issue of public soccer fields, I believe it's reasonable for us to ask for lights. Because if you look at baseball, basketball, tennis, or pickleball, they all have lights. So we believe it's a reasonable request. And the other thing is, if we are gonna have the ability of hosting tournaments, then also that is also, and have traffic and revenue bring, come back in the community, we do need to have access to lights. Thank you for your time and your considerations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, I close public comments. Move on to Kristy.
I'm sorry. This is about Silverback Landing remarks. You all have questions that I'd like to ask about tonight's agenda item. We're just wondering, does Silverback Landing LLC have a 501(c)(3) license? And please explain the process for how a for-profit development changes to a nonprofit development, and what happens when lots are sold? And is Silverback Landing LLC a broker for the lots, or a builder and seller of the houses? And who receives the money? Will Silverback Landing LLC be required to comply with all the documents approved and signed on September 25, 2018? What plans have been developed for the completion of the eligible cost list? Who's receiving any or all eligible costs in the RHID, and what does they amount? Is Silverback Landing LLC reducing the cost of the lots? Are the style of houses to be used during Phase One the same, or will there be other options? Will builders be required to construct as originally planned? And will they be required to be licensed? What will happen to the remaining property not in Phase One? If sold, will the proceeds from the property be considered profit? Will the Board of Directors be prohibited from purchase of the land? Will it be another RHID? Could other types of homes be allowed? What about the landscape easement that is to be constructed? The plat shows a 20-foot easement in the final plat in the Register of Deeds as stated by both the developer and city staff when asked during the plat approval process. Who is the responsible party to the homeowners already in the development? What is happening to the five homes built by P&amp;L after the agreement is executed? Have these homes been deleted from the agreement? In a few days, this development will have been approved eight years ago. A recommendation for the city is that it post all planning and zoning meetings on the city website to maintain consistent communication in this process. It is the hope of many that the rules and regulations that our city ordinances from this point on be followed throughout the timeframe of the existence of this agreement. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further comments, I'll close public input. On the consent agenda, we're pulling Item B off to consider separately. So consent agenda will be A and C.
Move to approve A and C.
Second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl. Roll call vote. Brooks?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
McNay?
Yes.
Muntzal?
Yes.
Siggly?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, approval of ordinance number G-1375, amending Section 7-72 of the Pittsburgh City Code to extend the residency requirement for certain city department heads from eight miles to 10 miles, and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance on behalf of the city. Cheryl?
I was just wanting you to explain the reason behind the, is it amended to go from eight to 10? Yeah. And that is to account for, thankfully, the new Director of Finance? You're correct. Great. Glad to have you. I just wanted that known. Yes.
Could you explain why you?
Because you're not in city limits of Pittsburgh. So I just, I know we heard, had people talk about the sales tax and what that burden is on them. And so, you know, that's my concern, that we ought to have people helping with what everyone else in the city pays for.
Yeah, but most companies will have to go outside their region to get, most cities will have to go out there to get experienced people. And that's just a reality today.
And we're already doing eight miles, so, I mean, we're just moving it from eight to 10, so.
So we don't, it's all right if, if you live in Pittsburgh, you pay for things that if you don't live in city limits, you don't have to pay for. I understand your comments, Stu.
Well, it's been all right, I mean, for the eight years, for the eight miles, so.
I realize that. But it's still not right in my eyes.
Are you suggesting all employees live in town?
Uh, well, you know, they used to when I was on the department, then they went to eight miles.
Every single employee has always, and during your tenure, had to live within city limits, every single employee? This is just department heads?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Just clarifying.
So as long as you all are all right with...
I think we'll, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
If you're all right with this and don't have to help pay for things in the city, that's how it's gonna be.
I also think we have a housing issue. And so even recruiting somebody from another community, they may have difficulty finding a house within...
Well, we're getting ready to sell a housing development to someone else that's gonna build some houses.
You can't wait for a finance director until a house is built. We're, we need it now.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
So, tell move.
Second.
Moved by Doc, seconded by Stu. I'm gonna do roll call vote. Brooks?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
McNay?
Yes.
Muntzal?
No.
Siggly?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, special presentation, 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the ACFR. Stacy Hammond from BT&amp;Co., PA, city's auditing firm, will present to review the city's 2024 audit and ACFR. Hello, Stacy, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stacy Hammond with BT&amp;Co., and I'm the partner on the city's financial statement audit. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present the results of the annual audit. I think all of you have received two documents from us. One of them is a copy of the audited financial statements, and the other is a report that's addressed to the members of the city commission. That report that's addressed to the city commission really puts into writing everything that our audit standards require us to present about the results of the audit, and it also forms the basis of my presentation this evening, if you'd like to open it up and follow along. The first thing that I need to visit with you about is our responsibilities in performing the city's audit. We did perform the city's audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States, the provisions of the Single Audit Act, Uniform Guidance, the Office of Management and Budget Compliance Supplement, and the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. All of those standards together do require us to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the city's financial statements are free from material misstatement. As far as the procedures that we performed, we did examine on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. We also reviewed the accounting principles that the city uses, and significant estimates made by management, as well as evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. The most important thing that I'll be telling you this evening is that, as a result of performing those procedures, we did determine that the city's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Therefore, we issued an unmodified audit opinion, which is the best kind of opinion that the city can receive. If you move on to the accounting policies and practices section in the report to the city commission, here we would bring to your attention anything identified in the procedures performed related to changes in existing accounting policies or newly adopted accounting policies, significant or unusual transactions, or significant estimates. There's a couple of items in this area that I need to report on. First, during the year, the city did implement a new accounting standard titled GASB statement number 101, compensated absences. This standard updated the recognition and measurement guidance for accrued compensated absences. Second, the city does have several significant accounting estimates that were required to discuss, which are summarized on pages six and seven, I believe, of the report to the city commission. Those are the other post-employment benefits liability, the net pension liability associated with the city's participation in CAPers, assets liabilities and deferred inflows related to leases, and the accrued compensated absences. Our responsibility as auditors every year is to assess the process that the city has in place to measure and record each of these accounting estimates. We did determine that the city does have a reasonable process in place to measure and record the accounting estimates, and that's what we're concluding next to each estimate on pages six and seven. There is a final section in the report to the city commission titled Observations About the Audit Process, where we would document concerns or issues that might have come to our attention during the audit, such as disagreements with management, significant difficulties performing the audit, or significant consultations. We had no difficulties dealing with management during the audit. Everyone was extremely cooperative and transparent throughout the entire audit process in answering the numerous questions that we have. You'll see at the back of the report to the city commission that there's a letter addressed to BT&amp;Co. that's seven or eight pages long with a bunch of numbered items on that, and we call that management's representation letter. That letter is the final step in the audit process. It really puts in writing everything that management of the city represented to us throughout the course of the audit. When management signs that letter and returns it to us, we go ahead and finalize the audit. We like to include that in your packet so that you can see what management did represent to us. We think it helps you to fulfill your fiduciary responsibilities in reading that and knowing what was represented. Before I open it up for questions, I would also like to discuss briefly that we did a single audit of the city's federal expenditures this year, because the city did expend more than $750,000 of federal expenditures. And you'll see that discussed in the audited financial statements, not in the report to the city commission. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance for the major program that we tested. We did identify one significant deficiency in internal control over compliance related to a lack of supporting documentation of review on two federal expenditures prior to the disbursement being created, and a material weakness in internal control over compliance related to a lack of supporting documentation that suspension and department procedures were performed before the start of the procurement activity. If you go back to the compliance section in the audited financial statements, you'll note that the city put a plan in place to immediately rectify both of those deficiencies, and those plans are already completed and the deficiencies fixed going forward, and I wanted to point that out. Before I open it up for questions, I would like to thank Jay, Jared, and everyone in the Finance Department for all of their help during this year's audit, as well as Margie, the consultant at AGH. I know it was an arduous process because there was no finance director in place throughout the entire audit process, and it really put a burden, you know, on everyone on top of performing their regular jobs to have to get ready for the audit preparation as well. I'm very excited that I've had a chance to meet Missy this afternoon, and she's already asked me questions about getting ready for next year's audit, and we loved hearing that and plan to meet very soon so that we can make sure that next year's audit finishes more timely. It sounds like you have a lot of exciting things in place with your new finance director, as well as implementation of new accounting software next year, and we look forward to working with you again. With that, I'd like to open it up to any questions that anyone might have.
Stacy, in terms of the deficiency that you found, there is a plan of action to correct those, but was there a policy update going forward so that doesn't happen again? And were you comfortable with that?
Yes. We reviewed the city's, we call it a corrective action plan, and we were comfortable with it. Next year, when we come in and do the audit, we actually assess the success of that plan as part of our follow-up procedures on the single audit, just to make sure that the plan was successful, because if it's not, then you have a deficiency going forward again. So we were pleased with the city's response to the plan, and just so you know, we are required to follow up on it next year as well.
When was the audit completed?
The audit was completed, let me get the date here, September 19.
And this was prepared after that?
What do you mean, was prepared after that?
I mean, this was written and prepared after that.
No, this report was prepared on September 19. It was delivered to you today.
And you're just talking about your report. What's this?
Both documents were prepared at the same time and issued at the same time. If you open up the audited financial statements, you'll see in our audit opinion, I believe, that that is also dated September 19.
So, I can't, I don't know where Doc's going with that, but...
Pardon?
My question, my question is, could we get this a little bit ahead of time so we have time to go through it?
Well, we got it to you as quickly as we could.
I realize that, but, you know, maybe we could give it...
Next year.
Absolutely. That, you know, I think it's always our goal for governing bodies to have, you know, a couple of weeks to read and absorb the audit report. I know that we just completed it, the city wanted to go ahead and get it on tonight's agenda. I do understand your concerns, and we'll take that into consideration going forward.
I'll just follow up with that.
Sure.
You said this was done September 19, both of them? This is September 23. I don't understand the reasoning why we get it tonight and vote on it tonight. I would have liked to have it on September, at least September 20.
Yeah, we don't vote on it. It's just received for file.
Well, I still would like to have it, like Doc said. I don't understand the reason why we didn't have this before tonight.
I mean, if you want to review it and bring questions to the next meeting, I'm sure Jay would be happy to respond.
When's it normally done?
When is the audit normally done? In a normal year, your audit is done by June 30, and we're presenting at the May meeting.
I mean, it's just, yeah.
Yeah. This year was variant compared to what normally happens.
I think this is not normal because we did not have a finance director.
No, usually we do, I mean, the audit, you guys are here in March or April, and this is just one of those years where, and they have a lot of clients, but yeah, I mean, the audit, you don't receive, you don't take action on the audit. I mean, you can read it, if you have questions on it, you can ask. It's just a, they have a requirement to get it done with their schedule, and we obviously have a requirement to get it done every year, but having it all, I mean, today's the day we got it. I guess we can get it, we can, like Don said, we can go through it in two weeks if you want, but your job's to present it.
I'd certainly be happy to come back and answer questions again, and you know, if you'd like time to look through it, I'm game to do that.
So I would suggest if you have questions, give them to Darren, and we'll determine whether or not you need to come back.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, consider the following. Assignment of Development Agreement, Silverback Landing. Consider staff recommendation to accept the assignment of development agreement between P&amp;L Development LLC and Silverback Landing LLC regarding the Silverback Landing project contingent on the close of the sale of Silverback Landing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. So the current Silverback Landing Phase One, which is that first segment, the rural housing incentive district agreement in between the city of Pittsburgh and P&amp;L Development was established, like you said, September 25 of 2018, when the RID was established. All we're asking for tonight is just approval of the transfer of ownership at the closing of the sale to a new owner, which is Silverback Landing LLC. So it just is a development agreement, basically, assignment to a new person.
The date of the sale is?
On September 26.
He probably said that, I apologize. So for any reason, if the sale doesn't go through, the decisions we've made to date will be null and void?
Correct.
Any questions for Kim?
Is it all of Phase One?
I'm sorry, what?
It's all of Phase One?
The development agreement?
Yeah.
Yes. So it's just whatever was established with the original RID, which was just the Phase One, and that ownership is transferred if they close on the 26th.
Even if all the properties aren't included in the sale later on?
Yes, because it's just a development agreement for the RID.
So everything that basically was promised by Mickey is gonna be continued on? This is just a sale of property?
Yeah, no, no other verbiage or anything changed within that development agreement other than, instead of saying P&amp;L Development, it's gonna say Silverback Landing LLC. That's the assignment change.
I've seen a question on, I don't know if it's four or five houses. Are they included in this sale, or does Mickey still retain ownership of those houses?
There are four, I believe, that are excluded from that, but I don't, I'm not sure.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, for Point Forward, but I can't, I don't, I'm not part of that sale.
So what was the understanding, that they're gonna be with the new developer bought?
No.
Mickey's gonna stay with them?
Yeah.
All right.
And we're only talking about the RID, not the contract. It's two separate things.
The RID applies to, numerous houses have been built and sold out there, and they have different owners. This is simply gonna change ownership of, the sale that's going through at the end of the week is gonna change ownership of the rest of those houses, less the four and the lots. But the entire, regardless of who owns the house, all the houses are part of the RID, and they all are treated the same. They pay property tax into the RID, and that's what, we're simply transferring that RID to the new developer. But it's separate, you have to think of it separate than who owns the houses and what houses are in the sale, because it doesn't really matter who owns them. Every house out there is part of the RID. Makes sense? I know it's confusing.
So you said the ones Mickey's keeping, when he completed them, he's gonna get the property tax?
No. We, you are, you are, you're not even being asked, you're just being, yeah, you're being asked to transfer the RID. The RID includes every project, every property in Phase One, regardless of Mickey Mouse owns it, Mickey owns it, the new people are gonna get it. Every house out there is in that RID. Who owns it is irrelevant. Those houses are out there, those lots are out there. When a house comes in out there, it pays property tax, and that property tax goes back to the developer through that RID. It does not matter who owns it. If somebody bought a house and they sell it, it's still, the house still stays with the RID, and the ownership has nothing to do with it. And it's confusing, but it's, if I'm not saying it right, Kim would interrupt.
No, that makes sense. It's just, the RID right now is, would go to P&amp;L Development LLC. And when they, hopefully, Silverback Landing LLC closes on the 26th, in order to transfer that RID to them on the date of closing, we have to approve this document. Does that make sense? So it'll be one of the documents that they will sign at the closing. You guys aren't signing anything, you're just approving it. If we don't do that, then, then the RID stays with P&amp;L Development LLC, which would defeat the purpose of selling the property. So it's just an assignment.
Any other questions for Kim? Would entertain a motion to approve? I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Stu. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Consider the following. November meeting schedule discussion is needed to determine the preference of the city commission members as to the November meeting schedule.
The first meeting in November is on Veterans Day, which I don't think it'll look good if the government's having a commission meeting on Veterans Day. So what is your pleasure? We can, we don't have the agenda, so I don't know if it's small enough that we could move it to the next meeting. We could obviously do the day before, we could do the day after. We just thought we probably needed to make a decision as early as possible on what to do on Veterans Day.
I would make a motion that we move it to the next meeting.
So just have one meeting in?
Just have one meeting.
Let's second that.
Move by...
So that would be the 25th, probably 25th.
Yep.
Is that fall?
Is that a problem?
This is fall on Thanksgiving, doesn't it?
The week of.
The week of.
The week of, yeah, okay.
But yeah, so we'll just have one meeting in November.
So moved by Doc, seconded by Chuck, to have, to unschedule the first meeting in November and then have all business the second meeting in November. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'd like, Kristy, I read all your, shouldn't these questions be addressed to the board when it closes, the board of Silverback? Most of them, I don't think they're, once it closes, then most of those questions will have to be answered by the new board, right?
By Silverback.
By Silverback.
LLC.
LLC.
I think you have to wonder, what are the responsibilities for Silverback Landing LLC once they do take over?
It would be within the development agreement and also the ordinances within the city. There's nothing, nothing extraordinary.
I know, but there are some questions concerning the, you know, Silverback Landing is a limited liability corporation, not a 501(c)(3). So how, so they're a for-profit, is that, is that what we're saying here?
Does somebody want to explain the community development?
Explain to me that, it was two or three weeks ago, and I thought I shared it with you, but if I didn't, I apologize.
You did, but I just, for the record...
You remember the answer?
Yes, sorry.
You do remember the answer?
Mm-hmm.
You just want me to just my memory? I mean, I'm not, I don't wor, I'm not part of that group. I mean, I asked Matt Burton, he gave me the answer, I shared it with you, so.
Well, maybe Jay can explain.
I believe the idea was that the new LLC is the only member of...
Point Forward is the only mem, Point Forward is a 501(c)(3), and Point Forward is the only owner and member of Silverback Landing LLC.
So yes, in theory, they, I don't think they have a for-profit or not-for-profit status, but since their only member is a not-for-profit, then they are in fact working as a not-for-profit.
I just thought that Silverback Landing was the same board members as Point Forward. Is that not true?
What, in essence, yes, because Point Forward is the only member of Silverback Landing LLC. So the group, the organization is the only owner and member of Silverback Landing.
And there's a board of directors of Point Forward.
Of Point Forward.
But then they are also a board for Silverback Landing. Is that right?
That's not the legal status, that's not exactly how that works, right? The board for the subunit is not necessarily the board of the overall parent organization.
Does the parent organization have a board?
Yes.
Yes.
So they could be the same board on both organizations?
They could be, you're right. The owner, the organization will take it and action, and that will affect its subunit. Okay.
So there's really no point in doing the action until the sale is final and you have, and Silverback has the property, right? I mean, it's kind of moot right now.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. But there are a lot of things on what's gonna be done in that land moving forward after the signing of the agreement.
Anything that's done, I would imagine, will be part of the development agreement and/or follow the ordinances of the community, of the city.
Okay, well, we know that that always didn't happen in this particular time in the last eight years. And it's, so there's a concern about what is going to take place on that, the whole property, not just Point, you know, the Phase One. And, you know, is there gonna be a standard? And Darren, we talked that Mickey, there were five houses he had out there, not four. And I had said they were still in the, in the development agreement. I think at some point, those houses were still listed as part of that RID. And I thought, you said though, that those were going to be taken out. So what is the status of that?
I just said it 10 minutes ago. All of the houses are in the RID.
Okay.
The sales contract, Mickey is keeping, and I was told, I said five today, I was told it was four. Once again, the city is not an entity in the contract. We are not buying or selling the property, so I don't have it in front of me to study, and I'm trying to give you the best information. Yes, four of those houses, it sounds like, will remain with Mickey. As well as, all of those other houses will remain with whatever builder is under contract to build those lots. Those lots will be sold, and they will be under the control of a builder. So that's the extent that I know. As far as what the mayor said, the development agreement, all of those, none of those have been amended. The codes department hasn't gone away. We'll still do what we did before, which is inspect the work, inspect the houses, and give them CFOs as they're completed. We all hope that it goes much better than it has the last eight years, which I think is why we've pushed so hard to try to get it to this point. But as with anybody else's property, I can't guarantee how people behave, and all we can do is react to how it goes. So I wish them the best of luck. I'm very thankful that they are switching owners. And I know it's extremely confusing, but the incentive the city gave to all of those houses being built was a RID, and that incentive is simply being transferred to another developer. But the plan is to get all of those lots built out, and to create a neighborhood, and something we can all be proud of, and generate taxes for our tax base. But if I could sit here and tell you it was going to happen and how it was going to go, I, I mean, we thought it was going to go with Mickey, so.
So after the signing on Friday, is there a way for them to answer some of these questions that are listed? Several, those are just my questions. There were several who had questions about this.
I would assume that you could ask to attend the board, maybe?
Or contact Jay or the chairman of the board and interact with.
Well, it'd be nice for everybody to hear what those answers are, not just me.
Jay, didn't they meet with the owners that are out there, the homeowners? Didn't Silverback LLC already meet with the property owners of Silverback?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
So Darren, when this ownership takes place, whatever Phase 1 was, is going to remain the same as what Mickey had.
Same size, same lots?
And the number of houses.
Yeah.
So when it goes to Phase 2, there's going to have to be another RHID.
Brand-new RID.
And that new, that new developer could have a whole different scheme of lot sizes and whatever.
And all that will come before you?
Right, right.
And you'll get a chance to approve that or disprove it, absolutely?
Yeah.
As well as Phase 3.
Okay, I don't think we satisfied you, Christie, but thank you. So Darren, would you like to introduce our new finance director?
I think I'm going to let Jay, because Jay's been doing the finance director's job for?
Yeah, I'm actually quite happy to introduce the finance director. I've been doing it for over a year now, and I think we have actually an actual qualified person to do this job now.
Because you were?
Mrs. Scott.
We aren't saying that publicly.
I know.
This is our city commission.
Hello.
Hi.
Nice to meet you all.
Tell a little bit about yourself.
Okay, I grew up in northwest Crawford County. My family farmed out that way, and so that's where I grew up, and I attended Gerard schools, and then Pitt State University for my bachelor's in accounting and my master's of business administration. I worked in a couple different corporate setting for a little while. Most of my time I've spent is in banking. I've spent 16 years in banking in positions such as a controller, business support manager, internal auditor. So I've got experience there. And then just recently, I spent a year at Fort Scott Community College, so that's been my next, I mean, my introduction into fund accounting since college. So I've got a little bit of background in that, so I'm happy to be here. Thank you all.
We're happy to have you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Darren, are we in a position to give an update on having the Turkey Trot down 69 Business?
I think we are. I'm looking for the smart people.
Oh, the whole gang.
Turkey Trot. So the police department has been working with the organizers for the past period of time. Lieutenant Cuppitt is actually the liaison with the police department. He's the organizing, the security aspect of all that. And I'm going to turn it over to lieutenant here, just kind of to synopsis of what's going on.
Thank you.
So we had a formal meeting last Thursday, kind of discussed the logistics of the event. The primary location for it all is going to be in the 400 block of North Broadway, which leaves 4th Street open for the majority of it. From there, they're going to run northbound, which will shut down northbound Broadway till about 11th Street. And then once the runners are through there, which should be the first part of the run, we'll open that back up. And we'll basically just have the 400 block of North Broadway shut down, and then we'll shut down 4th Street as the majority of runners come back through. They've talked to the businesses. Harry's toast, and now the Balkan are going to be open for the event. So it should be good income. They're looking to raise $25,000 for the Child Advocacy Center this year. Moving to downtown should kind of show off all the work we've been doing the past few years, and it doesn't seem like there's going to be too many issues. We've worked with the rest of the city departments. Streets is going to set up barricades. We have the, I assume the Christmas tree lighting is going to be that Saturday, and then the parade on Monday, so those will be out a couple days early.
Lieutenant, can you say what time and how they sign up for it if they're interested?
Yeah, the run starts at 8:00. They're going to be out there setting up early. If you want to register on location, or there's the Facebook page where they can register. Last year, they had 793 participants. Their goal this year is 1,000. They have a donor that's put up $10,000 to think of at least 1,000 members, so. All the city crews have been over. I've worked with Toby and Matt, and the streets department. Fire department's going to put up some firefighters. County's put up some deputies assist. We've got officers that are all volunteering their time to make sure it happens, and it.
We even have a trash department this year that can put out trash receptacles.
We do that, yeah.
That was a?
Citywide.
All right.
Didn't get handled very well last.
I'd like to commend, commend the city staff that are either being, either volunteering or being voluntold to give up their Thanksgiving morning, so.
Right.
That's very, very nice to, I know this was, the group was really wanting to have this on Broadway, so it's nice to be able to come to this agreement.
And just so we're clear, we're paying staff.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a good point.
But they still have to give up their morning.
I like the fact that we didn't have to tell people they were going to work. We just, you guys did a good job of saying, hey, who's going to work? And, you know, sure enough, we got enough people where we thought with some volunteers, we could pull it off. So it should be a great event, and we will definitely be paying the workers that are on there, but it's going to be good.
Everyone is willingly coming. They knew that we weren't going to have it without them, and we sent an email, hey, if you would like to do this, let us know. And we got, I believe, 10 with the PD. Fire's got plenty. County's got at least eight, and then the event itself has about 20, so we should have at least 50 volunteers running the event.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Awesome.
Thanks, Keith. Appreciate it.
Good job, guys.
Okay, we have something here that I forgot about. Utility easement?
We do. I think we even have pictures.
Maybe, I don't know.
We'll see if it works.
They'll do their thing. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Tonight, you should have been given a utility easement before you giving over easement at the? Hold on, I got to get right with the world. Hey, real quick, it's just, it's the best. So previously, this is an old photo of the best. You'll remember, there was a parking lot next to the best. You can see that old fence, and part of that was all parking for the actual best hotel itself. As it changed ownership and the city took over, we modified that parking lot. We modified everything. Well, at this point, during construction, with the modifications to the best, they have a need for additional easement on city property, which originally went with the best. So they're asking for 10-foot easement off the city's property of the south lot, which would be this lot right here. And what this is facilitating is the modification of their transformers. So the transformers they're going to replace at the best hotel for Evergy require to be offset farther, they're larger transformer, they require offset farther from the building, which is going to require easement onto our land, which really just disturbs those parking stalls that are to that. It will not affect the main drive lane into that parking lot.
So there's already a fence there behind the best. Is that basically the space? Like, if you pull into that parking lot?
It's really this first line of stalls right here on the north side of the building. So you can kind of just barely see where my pinhead is, where that existing transformer is, so where that white car is. You're basically going into that stall right there with the new transformers.
The balance of the parking spaces, is that public parking, or is that?
Yes, yeah.
Matt, is it just that area, the whole?
It's the straight, it's, they wrote the description as the length of the property line.
Okay, so you're giving up that whole row of parking?
Yeah, because they actually have some sanitary sewer coming into the building on the other side, so that just gives them a little more room to work in that area as well.
Okay.
So will that be protected by any?
Yeah, they'll have to. Every has, I think they've got pipe bollers and everything, and they're, in Evergy's detail to protect those transformers, so.
Any other questions for Matt? Would entertain a motion to approve the utility easement?
Make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Doc. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Any other non-agenda? All right, moving forward into executive session. An executive session is necessary for preliminary discussion regarding the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 7543-19B6. To discuss the potential acquisition of recreational property, I'm looking for a motion to recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the potential acquisition of real estate for recreational purposes pursuant to the preliminary discussion regarding the acquisition of real property exception under KSA 7543-19B6, with the meeting to resume in the commission room in 20 minutes.
So move for the standing.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.